The Monday, October 23rd, 2017 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you are all here with us this evening. I'd like to ask you to please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver, it's not here yet. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Ms. Oliver, I think will be joining us shortly. She's had some delays on metro. Do we have an agenda or a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the agenda for the meeting.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. So, we have a special evening. We have a special guest this evening. We're delighted to have you here with us. We have folks from the Northern Virginia Community College who will be telling us a bit more about what they do and all the good things they do for our residents and the community as a whole. So, I'm delighted to turn it over. Cindy, are you going to go ahead and say anything or we'll go ahead and turn it directly over to the folks from Northern Virginia Community College?
I think Ms. Susan Carney will introduce our guests from the Northern Virginia Community College, and it is good to have you here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome back.
Thank you very much. It's nice to be on this side of the dais, I'd have to say. Mayor Tarter, members of City Council, thank you for having us here tonight to talk to you about Northern Virginia Community College. Some of you may not even know that I am your representative to the college. I've been on the college board. I think this is starting my third or fourth year representing the interests of the city of Falls Church and our students and citizens and employees on the board. Thank you, Mr. Shields, for putting us on the agenda tonight and importantly, for putting us on the agenda first. We wanted to come tonight to give you a little bit of an update about what's going on at the college and to start to try to reposition for you the way you think about Northern Virginia Community College because what we're doing at the college is very different from what you may have usually imagined. We're not just about 18 to 21-year-olds who need a summer school class any longer or kids who went to college and didn't do so well and had to come back to community college for a couple of semesters. We're doing some exciting things that have to do with postgraduate learning, certificate and workplace-related learning, as well as continuing learning for elder students and also in things in technology like cybersecurity and other things. So, we're going to talk to you tonight about that and how it aligns with workforce needs in Northern Virginia. If you don't know much about the college, this will give you a little bit of an idea of the demographics of the college. I actually didn't know myself until I joined the board how large it is and how many students we have across six or seven campuses here in Northern Virginia. It's quite large, the 14th largest college/university in the nation. I'll let you pause and think about that for just a second, in the nation. It's huge. Our average student ages 24.8, so as you can see, it's not only 18- and 19-year-olds. And our class sizes are small and importantly, our classes are all taught by professors, not by teaching assistants. So, our students get the attention that they need to get a great education at Northern Virginia Community College. And in fact, my informal survey of kids from the City Falls Church who've taken courses at Northern Virginia has been quite positive about their experience there in the college, a lot of great things I've heard. Our region ranks fourth in the nation in job openings right now, many of them in technology, things like cybersecurity, but 18th out of 20 in growth of our labor force. We're fully employed, you know? And so, that's presenting challenges for our region as we try to change our economy. Good evening, Ms. Oliver. We have a new strategic plan that the President of the College, Dr. Rawls, will present to you this evening that will let you know what our strategic direction is. With me this evening, I have a few of the wonderful academics and professionals who I have the pleasure to work with in Northern Virginia Community College. Next will be Dr. Pam Hilbert, who was the Provost at the Annandale Campus, the largest kind of central hub campus we have in the system. Next, Dr. Annette Hagre, who is here also. Will say some things about the Alexandria Campus. We have many students who attend that campus. It's very close to us and quite convenient for our use. And then finally, the President of the College, Dr. Scott Rawls, will say some words about our strategic plan and that we are looking to move the college forward. So, once again, thank you. I so appreciate you having me and having my colleagues here from Northern Virginia, and I hope you'll enjoy what we have to present to you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Pam Hilbert. I'm the Provost of the Annandale Campus for Northern Virginia Community College. As you know, we serve over 70,000 students at six different campuses, so we thought this evening that Annette and I would tell you a little bit about two of the campuses closest to you, which are the Annandale Campus and the Alexandria Campus, the two largest campuses, although the others are growing, so that's a good thing as well. So, since I'm on the Annandale Campus, I wanted to show you just a couple of things about the Annandale Campus. We generally have around 20,000 students throughout the year on the Annandale Campus with the average age a little bit higher than the 24 and 52% female students. Over 50% of our students on the campus are minorities and 94.4% are in-state residents. I thought you might find that interesting because many of our students do identify from another nationality, but yet they are residents of Virginia. The largest enrollments on the campus are transfer programs for information technology, business administration, engineering, and general studies. We do have a couple of, well, here's some examples of important partnerships. So, Nova has many partnerships, and I'm sure Dr. Rawls will talk to you more about those, but I just wanted to give you a couple of examples. For example, we work with the high schools. So, for George Mason High School and others in the area, we do dual enrollment. So, we have students who are able to take classes with Northern Virginia Community College while they're still in high school, and they don't have to pay for that because of the partnership that we have with the school systems. And so, for George Mason High School, for last year, we had 123 students who participated in this. Many of them begin with our Pathways to the Baccalaureate Program. So, that program had 26, with 14 of those now students currently at the community college. The Provosts and math leaders of Annandale and Alexandria met with the Fairfax County Public Schools leaders recently, and we're planning a joint math faculty meeting coming up in January. We find that math is a particular stumbling block for many of our students, kind of doesn't matter where they come from, math seems to scare a lot of people, and so we've chosen to take some time to focus on that. We also partner with many in the community, and for example, we're a member of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, and we have a cohort in general studies for employees of Fairfax County Government. Just a couple of pictures to show you some unique pathways of study that we have at the Annandale. Each of our campuses has a little bit of a different flavor, and there are a few programs that only exist on one or two of the campuses. So, at Annandale, we have the American Sign Language Program for students. Also, we have the Interpreter Program, which has a transfer situation with Guyadet University. We just signed for that last year. We're very excited about that expanded partnership. And then a picture of Chef Herbert and one of his students demonstrating frostings at a community fundraiser. We do try to get our students involved in the community in a lot of different ways so that they're engaged not only with the community, but more engaged with the college and more likely to stay and finish their education that way. And in continuing with working on student success, the last thing that I'll share with you is a couple of photos of our students doing some extracurricular work to expand their knowledge in the sciences. We had a STEM fair on our campus. Each of our campuses has some version of a STEM fair throughout the year. So, here's the example from the Annandale Campus, and I thought you would enjoy seeing the young folks working on their projects. So, now I'll turn it over to Annette.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Good evening. I'm Annette Hagre, the Provost for the Alexandria Campus, and thank you for having us this evening. I'd like to share just a few highlights regarding the Alexandria Campus. As you can see from the slides, we have some similarities with the Annandale Campus in terms of our student demographics, and our two campuses probably have more in common than the other campuses relative to that. We have an enrollment of about a little over 16,000 students. Our average age is a little higher also with about, at 28, with about 53% female students. We have a larger population of minority students with a growing Hispanic/Latino population. About 88% of our students are in-state residents and a little over 2,000 are from over 150 countries, and so that number continues to grow. In terms of program highlights, the cybersecurity program for Nova is housed at, is led by a faculty member who teaches at the Alexandria Campus, and it is our fastest-growing program with over 1,400 students enrolled and continues to grow. And we're very pleased that the program has been designated as a national, as a Center for Academic Excellence for Two-Year Institutions by the National Science Foundation. Also, the individual who leads our cyber program, Dr. Margaret Leary, is a very well-known faculty member across the country, particularly in the state of Virginia, but across the country. She has become integrally involved in cybersecurity work at the national level, also has been recognized by the state of Virginia as the Outstanding Faculty of the Year for the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia, as well as the first endowed faculty member for the Virginia Community College System. So, we have a very strong expert who is working with Nova to try to advance cybersecurity training and support and program development for our college. As Pam indicated, we too engage in collaborations with a variety of sectors. We work very closely with the public schools within our service areas, and we try to engage on a number of levels, but these are three ways in which we are relating with all of our high school and partners throughout our service areas. We're really working hard to increase our dual enrollment options for students, allowing more students to be able to complete college-level coursework and gain credits while in high school. And for this area for Falls Church, we do have some students from Stewart High School who enroll with us in our childhood development program. We also are working with Fairfax County Public School officials on offering programs in the old Mount Vernon High School. We're trying to develop a program that will allow individuals, residents, to be able to complete an actual program, not just courses, but an actual program, a degree program, and to be able to either parlay that into a path towards employment or towards transfer to a four-year institution. And we're also continuing to identify continuing education needs in the areas that we're serving and to identify opportunities to offer those training programs leading towards credentials and for those individuals who want to transfer to provide those pathways as well. And you'll hear a little bit more about pathways a little bit later. A couple of programs that we're working on with Mount Vernon are a program that will allow students to earn a social science AS degree as well as a general education certificate, again, trying to prepare those who would choose to transfer. One of the things I will also share with you is that we had the pleasure of opening a new building on the Alexandria Campus a couple of weeks ago, the New Center for Design, Media, and the Arts. It is quite exciting to have the building on campus because it provides multiple, it meets multiple needs. It not only houses our fine arts programs, our media design programs, but also our campus bookstore. It houses a fitness center for the campus as well as a gymnasium. There is a choral room that is used by our campus and community choral group, as well as classrooms for other disciplines. And so, it is a well-utilized building, and we would be delighted if you should want a tour to be able to offer that to you. So, we welcome you to our campus. And then finally, what, these are pictures of activities in which some of our students engage. We are very, very proud that we have a very strong honors program at our college, and students on all of our campuses are able, campuses are able to participate in a variety of honors-related activities. So, this year, students were able to participate in an induction ceremony for the National Society of Collegiate Scholars. There's all, there was also a math competition that was held at the Annandale Campus, and so our students are always, there are a variety of opportunities that are always offered on one campus or the other that our students are able to participate in. So, I will end there and invite Dr. Rawls. Thank you.
Dr. Rawls, welcome.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council members. First, let me begin by thanking you for this opportunity this evening and also for your continued support, great support of our community college. We take the word "community" in our name very, very seriously, and we're proud to be this region's community college, but the community college for the Falls Church community. So, thank you for that. I'm going to talk a little bit about our future, what we're focused on right now and how we're moving forward. Ms. Carney and our Board recently approved a new six-year strategic plan for our college just a couple of months ago. It's a very, as I would like to say, audacious plan for us, but with three kind of focus areas of areas that we want to be stronger in after six years. One is a real focus on workforce development, and you've heard that mentioned already, and there's a reason why for this. As this chart shows, over the 10-year period, the demand in our region for individuals with credentials beyond high school, and that can range from certification and certificates as we offer all the way up to graduate, is tripled in that time period. And this region, our Washington region, and particularly actually the Northern Virginia region, is somewhat challenged in meeting those needs. As was indicated earlier, we have one of the hottest job markets in the country. We're recognized as one of the top technology hubs in the country, but we also don't have as much of a, as our labor force is not growing as fast as most metro regions, and that's particularly true in the Northern Virginia region, primarily because sometimes it's difficult to live here. The cost of housing can be a challenge, the transportation, and so people don't move in here as much as they do. That puts a even greater emphasis on institutions like ours where people live here, go to school here, to grab the opportunities that already exist here. And so, that's why we're putting a great focus on workforce. In doing so, we don't just do it by swag. We're very data-focused in our efforts. We actually have a center now for workforce intelligence, which generates data down to the minute levels in some ways. And so, if you just look at Falls Church, we can see that right now, there are 12,260 people employed in Falls Church City. Annual growth is expected to be 0.6% of the labor force annually, just slightly less than the region's annual growth, 807 new jobs over the next 10 years, where we expect to see the demand in particularly Falls Church City, healthcare, professional scientific technical services. That's not unusual for the rest of the region. And with about as many, or about a third of the, or a fourth of the active job postings now is represented for the overall labor force. And so, we look at data in that regard to also help our students and to help us focus where we place our investments. Just a couple of things we're focused on in that regard. We have our strategic plan. We say that we want every community prosper, every student to succeed, and every program to achieve. And so, with respect to every community prospering, that is this emphasis on workforce development. So, several focus areas in that regard. One, as you see here, is a focus on internships, mentorships, and apprenticeships for students. In fact, this part of the presentation I'm not supposed to be giving right now, our Vice President of Workforce Development, Steve Partridge, is actually in Germany this evening with Siemens Corporation on an apprenticeship trip. But we're very focused on what this means and how we can expand it. We're proud that we recently became the first college to support Amazon, Amazon Web Services, with the first Amazon apprenticeship for their technology, AWS, their corporation, on the East Coast. And so, we're working very much, we do that in concert with our veterans. We, about 15% of our student population is veterans, so we're very focused on veterans' employment and how we can tie into technology companies through apprenticeships. Another area is career awareness. Our college is recognized as one of the most digital community colleges in the country. We've received that award previously and are always ranked in the top five community colleges in the country. One of the ways we're focusing on that segues into our efforts to make sure that every student succeeds. One area that we feel like we should and we can do a much better job than we're doing now is in terms of working with students to advise and support them in the information sources that they need to make the choices, which can sometimes be daunting for any college student, particularly sometimes for first-generation students who are coming into college. And so, we're creating entirely new advising structures. That means how we're organized, but it also means how we use technology. We'll be using technology in a completely different way that offers what we think will be transformational in how students can access information about what courses to take, what areas to study in. In fact, in piloting that, students suggested, who piloted the program with us, our new technology, is that about 40% said they would have selected different majors if they had been able to have the types of information that we're able to provide to them. So, we think that's an important component for making sure that every student succeeds. And as was indicated, we're making investments in areas where we see great demand. Right now, in the Northern Virginia region, 38% of all the job openings are in two areas, 28% in information technology, which includes cybersecurity, and then a 10% in healthcare. And so, in terms of healthcare, where there's greatest demand in this city, we're focused in that regard in terms of how we expand efforts at our medical campus, particularly in terms of nursing, working with the different hospital centers around the, around the area and the region, and looking at other programs as well. In IT, we graduate more information technology graduates than any community college in the country, but we're not sitting still. As you saw, our cybersecurity program has grown to the point where it is one of the largest and fastest-growing in the country. Today, Austin Community College was with us to explore our program. Tomorrow, we'll be testifying before Congress about our program. We think we're probably the premier cybersecurity program in our region and that's, or in our country, and I think that's important because our region by far has more cybersecurity jobs than any region in the country. In fact, last year, Fairfax County had 10% of all the cybersecurity job openings in the country in Fairfax County alone. So, it's tremendous opportunity for our students, tremendous opportunity for this region, and an opportunity for all of us to confront in terms of workforce development. So, when you look at our strategic planning, again, we say every community prospers, our focus on workforce development, every student succeeds, how we provide the supports to our students beyond just the classroom, but also every program achieves. And one area in terms of every program, the majority of students who come to Nova are coming to Nova to get to someplace else. 20 to 25% of our students are coming to us to get straight into the workplace, to go straight to a job. The majority of our students, though, are coming to us as the first two years of college to then move forward to a university. And that's a wonderful thing, opportunity for them because coming to us, they save a full year worth of tuition and fees by coming to us compared to a public university and much more compared to a private university. The challenge that transfer students can run into is one that Nova is confronting, I think, more head-on than any other community college in the country right now. And that's the challenge sometimes students don't know about until they actually leave a community college, and they look to see that sometimes their credits don't transfer with them. Now, one thing that we have in Virginia that's a great, a great thing is our guaranteed admissions agreements. Students know that they hit certain benchmarks, they're guaranteed admissions through their grades to be able to transfer to. We have 26 agreements in Virginia, over 40 overall guaranteed admissions for students. But we want even more from our partners, particularly those where our students are most likely to transfer, and we call those new forms for us of partnership that we're calling guaranteed transfer partnerships, making sure that every credit when a student leaves, they know that they will not be backtracking or having to repeat any credits or any courses. One way we're doing that is through our great partnership with George Mason. We're literally joined at the hip with George Mason, and we're taking that to an entirely new level through an effort that we're collectively calling Advance. What Advance means is we'll be building on an initial model we have with mechanical engineering where students can be jointly admitted into both institutions. They can have seamless opportunities to move through Nova into Mason in support of counseling, all the different services that they would receive, but by coming to Mason, coming to Nova the first two years, they'll save over a year worth of tuition and fees and have this seamless experience between our two institutions. That's an effort that we're very proud of, and we're working diligently with our great partners at George Mason. But we're also working with colleges, our primary transfer partners across the state. Recently, we signed an agreement with Radford. In November, in a couple of weeks, we'll sign an agreement with ODU, Old Dominion, and several other universities that are teed up to make sure that we can provide or have with them what we call guaranteed transfer partnerships, a unique way to make sure that our students know that when they take a certain set of courses towards their program, all of those courses will transfer, they start cleanly as juniors and have to do no backtracking. So, a unique opportunity for Nova students. Although for many of our students, too, they have opportunities right on our campus to finish a four-year degree. They can finish a four-year degree in cybersecurity with George Washington. They can finish a four-year degree with the University of Virginia in the Bachelor of Individualized Study Program at our Alexandria Campus. And so, unique opportunities for our students as they transfer to attain that ultimate goal that many of them are looking for is their bachelor's degree. Just in a nutshell, to wrap up, Nova, as was mentioned earlier, we're the 14th largest college in the country. That makes us probably the largest country that most people have never heard of. There may be reasons for that. We don't show up in many of the top 20 lists that you often see popular in terms of, you know, we're not ranked among the most beautiful campuses in the country. Our students will quickly tell you we don't have the top 20 food service or amenities in the country. Our football team is not ranked, even though we've never lost a football game in the history of our college. But one area that we are ranked, and we're very proud of this, is recently a Stanford economist ranked all the universities and colleges in the country with data that was not attainable until last year, that he got uniquely from the federal government, where he was able to look at the income trajectories, the socioeconomic ladder being climbed by students after attending a university or college across the country. That's a place Nova does very well. We're among the best community colleges in the country in that regard, but we were particularly strong in terms of the percentage in the top 10 of community colleges in the country in terms of the percentage of our students who grew up as children in the bottom 20% of the income bracket, but as adults eventually emerged after attending Nova into the top 20% of income brackets. That's a pretty big climb, and that says a couple of things. First, we think it says something about our college, that our college provides unique opportunities that are available because we exist and because you support us. It also says something about our region, that it's possible to do that in our region because those opportunities are there as long as a student has the opportunity to actually have a ladder to climb and reach those opportunities, and Nova's very proud to be able to provide that opportunity for so many thousands and thousands of students and families across this region. Thank you for your time, and we'll be glad to entertain any questions if you desire.
Thank you very much. That was a very informative presentation, and we certainly appreciate your leadership at Northern Virginia Community College. A lot of great things happening there. Before you step down, I want to see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for you. Does anybody have anything they would like to ask Dr. Rawls? I have sat through a number of regional meetings, and I know how important workforce development is, and I know your college is playing a leading role in the region and the state with advancing that cause, so that's certainly most appreciated. Mr. Z, did you have a question?
Yes, I do want to thank you for coming out tonight and giving us such an informative and heartening demonstration of the force of education at work and taking the diversity of young people in our region that actually want to take advantage of the facility. You had touched a little bit about workforce development and partnerships with corporations and manufacturers and industries of the future. Could you just give us a few more words about what you're doing in that area?
Well, one of the things is where we invest and where we put resources, and so we do that in a couple of ways. I showed you a little bit in terms of data, but data alone is not important. It's about developing those partnerships. So, for example, I mentioned our Amazon partnership. We are the first academic partner with Northern Virginia Technology Council, which represents all the tech community in this region. That helps us to pull together groups of companies to actually try to hit their broad targets. So, as an example of how we do that, a program area that we're putting time in now, it's not actually at either Alexandria or Annandale, but will be close by in terms of Loudon and Manassas, is working towards a new focus that's called around engineering technology, particularly in terms of mechatronics and in terms of critical infrastructure. So, one of the things we have here is we have, we have data centers. We have more data centers than any other region of the country. We have federal facilities and other types of facilities which have 24/7 operation requirements. One of the things that's emerging now in terms of technology is that it creates a new role for technicians. Most of the, many of the hacks that come through to our college don't occur through computers, but often occur through the HVAC system. You know, there's now more networked things in the world than there are actually people in the world, and those things then become vulnerable to attack just like a computer would, and that turns up the volume in terms of the demand for many jobs that are now people are aging out of, for technicians in those areas. So, that's an area we're focusing on, gives an example of how we move forward. We're paying attention to culinary hospitality, how we can long-term. Our big challenge is different than other regions where there are more people than jobs for some reasons, so they're figuring out how do we bring in more and how do we do more. Our challenge in this region is we have more jobs than we have people, and to keep the engine going for us, we have to fill that workforce gap. So, there's many areas we're focused on. That's why making the right investments is very important to us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Duncan?
Just as Council's liaison to the Chamber of Commerce Board, I'd like to thank you all for your involvement in the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, which just about every month gives us an opportunity to catch up on month gives us an opportunity to catch up on some aspect of your work, so I think it's a good partnership, helps keeps folk, helps keep folks here informed of what you're doing, you know, in between your reports to us every year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Snyder, and then Ms. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thanks very much. One of the initiatives I'm interested in for the future is looking at how this community can best use technology to advance its values and its goals and better prepare ourselves for the inevitable, everything from self-driving cars to fill in the blank. Does Nova have some resources we could draw on for such an effort in the future?
Absolutely, yeah. We would be glad to, and particularly working through the chamber and through our provost here, bring those resources, whether they're data resources that we have, but we also see, you know, what you're talking about, some cities talking about the focus on smart cities. I think where we're trying to develop our niche is that intersection of networked things. I mean, you know, in many ways, the notion of network technology started in this region. I mean, this region was home to DARPA, this region was home to AOL, the first, you know, private internet company. Now, we're on the flip side, where staying networked also means really a focus on security. How do you make sure that our networks are secure? So that's why we were just meeting with our Alexandria Automotive Team. One of the reasons they're focused on this whole issue of security is because of the autonomy that we face in terms of transportation, and that's going to really change the role of technicians, because when you're concerned about hacks, you're certainly going to be concerned about that in autonomous vehicle. So that's the niches that we want to look for, those places where things are networked to systems and the technical expertise required, and we certainly would be fortunate, we would be glad to work with you in any way we can provide support in that regard.
Great. Thank you for your work and the critical role that you play in our region.
Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Connolly.
I just want to say thank you for your work with high school students, the Pathways Tobacco Lariat Program, and the Dual Enrollment Program at George Mason High School have been very successful. The numbers you showed earlier show that they're successful, but knowing some kids who have participated in those programs, they really are helpful, and they're really helping our kids find where they're going to go after high school. So thank you for those, and someone mentioned you're having a meeting with Fairfax County math teachers, and I'd just like to put in a plug, if you'd like to invite a George Mason High School math teacher to that, you could certainly do that. A Falls Church City math teacher would also probably be interested in participating.
All right, well, we'll do that. Yeah, just in closing, if I may, I'll note, I appreciate what you said about our Pathways Tobacco Lariat Program and also our dual enrollment. One of the things I'm very impressed with Nova, I've only been there two years, is the commitment of our college to reach out to people who would not have college opportunity otherwise. And our college puts, I think, more investment into assertive outreach into the high schools and even in middle schools in many of our communities to pull students in who would be first generation, low income, in some cases facing disabilities like autism and need our college. And so we're very aggressive about that. That's the philosophy of our college, and we're very, very proud of that role that we play, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you coming up in the near future. Appreciate all your good work. Okay, Mr. Shields, actually, before we get to that, Madam Clerk, are there any oaths of office to administer?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Shield, oh, well, let's go to public comment. Why don't you go ahead and summarize the written comments, if you could?
We had two public comments this time. Amanda Henneberg asked why the residential units at the proposed Broad and Washington project were apartments instead of condos, and Juanita Bowman of 114 Gresham Place wrote to thank the city for improvements in Cherry Hill and Crosman Parks. She thanked city staff members Jeremy Edwards and Charles Prince for the removal of invasive plants and replanting of native species in Crosman Park.
All right. We're now going to move to receipt of public comment. Do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, well, I'm going to open it up to the floor anyway. If anyone would like to speak at this point, you're certainly welcome to. We would ask that you fill out a pink speaker slip, which are available in the lobby or from the clerk, and when you do speak, please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Seeing there are no public speakers at this point, why don't we move to council requests? Are there any council requests? Mr. Duncan?
I just wonder if the manager could tell us if Ms. Henneberg's request for information about why the Broad and Washington project is apartments instead of condos can be responded to in some fashion by perhaps Economic Development Office or someone? It's a question that comes up, you know, others have posed it, and do we have some boilerplate answer that we can give?
I don't know about boilerplate, but we certainly should get a response back, and so I'll make that a priority.
Okay, thanks.
I think some of us on council probably have also replied as well, or at least some of us on council received that question, so I think she has gotten responses, at least for some of us. All right, why don't we move on to the report?
Just one quick additional request, and I know there was some email traffic, and I appreciate it from Tom Clinton regarding the stickers and why we use stickers for the tax receipts and Fairfax County doesn't. So I've gotten a number of questions about that, so I think we ought to maybe explain why we do what we're doing there and why we don't do it the way Fairfax County does, which is without the sticker. That comes from the immediacy of people having to take the old stickers off and put the new ones on. So I've gotten that question from a number of folks, and I think there was an inquiry that was well responded to, but I think that needs to be made a bit more public as to why we're doing what we're doing.
Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a request of the city manager to provide some follow-up on the request from the tree commission and Arbers to insert some language on the VCs for the Ensign Project. I believe it was the offset for the green space, to develop green space and to address the number of trees lost. If you could go back to the 22nd of June, when that request was made to council and to you, and give us the status on that.
Well, I would just say that that request has not been dropped. It is in our list.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other council requests? If not, why don't we move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. If I could do two things with the mayor's report tonight. The first is to provide Ms. Bawa with an opportunity to speak with you just briefly about the first quarter financial report. We don't learn a lot about, from the first quarter financial report, but we do learn some things, and some of them is actually relevant to Mr. Snyder's question about personal property tax collections, and that is sort of one piece of information in the first quarter that we can talk about. So if I could turn that over to Ms. Bawa, and then as the second part of the manager's report, to provide you with an update on CIP projects. And we would typically do that in a work session environment, but we had the walking tour during the work session a week ago, and so we'd like to take the opportunity tonight to do that, and Ms. Messer will provide that report. Ms. Bawa?
Good evening, Mayor Charter and members of the council. The first three months of fiscal year 18, overall, the revenues show that they are 3%, slightly 3% over budget. Off note is personal property tax, that came in 7.5% over budget. We've added 177 cars in the first three months here, and expenditures are slightly under budget, showing a slight underspending. As mentioned, first three months' performance is not sufficient data to formalize a trend for the fiscal year. We will have a little bit more informed information as part of the revenue forecast for the fiscal year 19 budget in December, and then we'll follow that with the mid-year budget outlook in February. There is attachment provided in the memo with specific information on other revenue and expenditure categories, and that concludes my report. If you have any questions.
All right, any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Ms. Bawa. I read in the memo that it looks like we're still taking a hit from the delay of Founders Row. How far out are we projecting that we're still expecting those licenses and permit revenues to come in, and I guess how long should we expect that to have an impact on us, given the continued delay?
We budgeted a lower amount than last year in that category, the licenses and permits, and like I said, this is just the first three months. We would at least like to wait for the mid-year performance, which will come to you by the late January or early February, to see where we're at, and hopefully, if the project shows any progress, by that time, we would predict the likelihood of that revenue, and it'll feed into, as an information, into the fiscal year 19 budget development.
Got it. So I just want to make sure, so for the rest of FY18, we have anticipated, or at least planned in the budget, to receive the revenue from that project, but albeit a lower amount than what we thought originally?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other, Mr. Duncan?
Do we have a copy of this in our packets, or?
No, we're calling.
This already informs us that it's online, so I believe I did read the online briefly, but I didn't, is there a paper version?
Yes, there was a two-pager with an attachment on the revenues and expenditures.
It's in here somewhere, then. Could I just ask one question about the unassigned fund balance? As I'm sure everybody's aware, there's a lot of talk about risk assessment and so forth as we undertake major projects or discuss whether to undertake them. I know that the amount of money in the unassigned fund balance fluctuates during the year according to income and outgo, but it would be helpful, I think, if the public could be informed about, you know, where it was at its last firm snapshot at the end of July or at the end of June, I think you gave that to us earlier, and if there's been any, you know, significant change in the first quarter, so that we could just let folks know that there is a cushion of, substantial cushion of money that is in the unassigned fund balance, which usually goes undiscussed, as apart from the capital reserve.
As part of the last year's fiscal year-end report, we saw a surplus, or I should say underspending, primarily due to expenditure underspending, the revenues were, did not meet the budget for last year. However, the expenditure underspending showed us a saving of a little less than $500,000 that brought our unassigned fund balance to $14.8 million. And we are at target with that amount, that is still the city's unassigned fund balance. The cash flow for the year, you know, fluctuates depending on the fiscal activity that goes in and out, however, the unassigned fund balance remains at that level.
Okay, so coming on to $15 million. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, any member of the public wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, is there anything else that people want to ask or talk about with this? Mr. Z.
Well, I thought there might be a little bit more about personal property and decals in particular. I was given to understand that the reason we have decals is because they're fairly easy to print and you can track them, and the police can see basically who's in the city, who's not. It was explained, I think, earlier by the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer that Fairfax doesn't have decals because those that don't pay for registration are covered by those that actually do, and in this city, we're just too small to have that kind of scenario. So if you could verify that, that would be great. The one thing I am hearing a lot is that there was some shift from Kelley Blue Book on valuation of cars to the NADA valuation of used cars, and I was given to understand that this valuation now has had the net effect of increasing the value of everyone's used cars, and people were understandably upset by that. So I could not explain why or if that happened. It's argued to me that Kelley Blue Book is what car gurus and other people use to sell their cars, but NADA valuation is on a slightly different basis. Could you look into that?
Yes, we'll definitely look into that and report back on that.
All right, I've got two more weeks of campaigning to do. Thank you very much.
Sure, will do.
Okay, is there any?
Okay, I do not have this paper that we are talking about, so I just want to make sure.
We'll get you this paper.
I am not the only one who does not have this paper.
No.
Okay, fine, just making sure. And just for the record, my oldest used car is still as worthless as it was before.
I apologize for not having the written version. The digital version is online, but we did not make copies of it, and I apologize for that.
While we're doing that, we're going to get the Redskin Game on for a few minutes, and then, okay, so is there anything else that people want to say about that matter? All right, if not, Mr. Shields, why don't we move on to the next portion of your report?
The next portion is an update for the council on the ongoing CIP projects, and so we spend a lot of time and budget time talking about future projects, and really, this is a touch base on execution. How are we doing? And so we want to provide this, we do this on a quarterly basis, and we won't go through every project, but we want to give the council and the community an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Good evening, council. I do want to highlight some of our projects and then show off the online story map that the community can use to stay up to date on these projects. The memo would be in your packet for 9C1, and for this one, what we're reporting on with the snapshot that I just put up on the screen for a visual cue is that we have 32 active projects right now in the CIP. Since our last update was in February, when we did the planning commission, started the CIP review, we've actually completed nine projects. I'm very excited to be able to report that. None of our projects are red, meaning stopped. They're all green or yellow, and I'll highlight a few of those. Also, I'd like to note in the memo, we've reported on some updates on transportation funding. You know, we now have a grant schedule, we're working to regularly apply for the two and four years out, and so this was a good opportunity to let you know that we did get significant grant awards, and you can see that on the second page with our highway safety improvements. The smart scale funding was really a positive allocation of resources to the community, and that's one of the new state funding sources. It has a much more stringent and competitive scoring process, but it is one that's finally giving some credit for multimodal and things that reduce congestion, and staff has been actively involved with VDOT, who's currently reviewing and hopefully improving some of those criteria. TAP grant for WNOD trail crossings, which is further described in the grant application request later on your agenda to support the Nova Parks additional grant for the due trails under that program. Those will pair nicely together. And then primary extension to pave the other half of Broad Street that wasn't done with the last go-round of VDOT money last year. We actually had a staff meeting today, we've received the money, and we're starting to do the planning and the procurement process so that we can do that repaving effort. We are looking and will be bringing forward, to council, five revenue-sharing grant applications. Those will come in November, and then two MBTA applications that will come in December so we can meet those grant deadlines. So this is an opportunity to just give you a heads-up on grant applications coming and the success we've had on the last go-rounds of applications. Now, for some of the highlights, before I get to the story map, as Mr. Shields indicated, I'm not going to go through them all, I'm just going to highlight a few, and then Mr. Whitfield is here with me this evening, and will be glad to answer any questions on specific projects. So attachment, one of that memo starts with the colored progress dots as you see on the screen. Cherry Hill Park is making progression, as Mr. Shields noted at your last council meeting. The site plan is almost approved, the equipment's been ordered, the tree work has already begun, and we're working with Dominion, Virginia, Dominion Energy, new name, Dominion Energy, Virginia, for one of the light poles that's in that playground area. Downtown Plaza is also progressing, we're working on cost estimates, and the design is noted yellow simply because we know the current costs are higher than what's budgeted by the EDA as they weigh options for some of the add-ons, like the water features, and that'll be revisited this month when those costs come in. Big Chimneys Park is progressing, the design is complete, we've had a lot of great community engagement and input, and the site plan is being developed, and that'll be submitted to Development Services by the end of this year. So that's on schedule. For the library renovation and expansion project, staff is working to do some cost estimate updates, as well as the new library director is revisiting the programming to make sure it's still current where things are since some time has elapsed. So we are anticipating late this year to start the A&E work. We're in the process of working with our on-call contractors now in construction in 2020 per the adopted CIP. Under Stormwater, four projects there, but one that is positive and complete is the Westmoreland Cavalier Trail Park drainage project. We always had some flooding and draining at the end of that street, and so now... We always had some flooding and draining at the end of that street, and so now with this project, we were able to correct that. There's bio-retention and some best practices for water management, also improved the sidewalk and some ADA accessibility down at that playground end. And so I think those were the projects I was gonna highlight. What I would like to do now is share...
I'm sorry, can I ask one quick question? Uh, Ms. Mester, there are a number of projects that say winter, and I'm not sure whether winter is January or December.
Um, we would be doing December through February in our winter definition, but, um, we can't be even a little more definitive on the next go-round.
Thank you.
Months from now, or is it, uh, 14 months from now? It's kind of your, is that your question?
Well, it depends on how it's phrased, and, and so, for example, um, the, uh, there was at least one project that said winter 2017, and I was pretty sure it didn't start in January, but...
That probably would be then December.
Um, it's just something that could clarify things.
We can certainly do that. Um, one of the things when we've talked about the snapshot in the past...
I think there's another question.
Sorry, I, I, I did have another.
Keep on going.
The traffic signal timing, I had asked about that at our last, uh, meeting, and Mr. Shields had said he would get back to me on that. Um, that's one of the ones that has winter on it, and I was just wondering if you could be a little bit more definitive for that.
We're anticipating that that's gonna be wrapped up in the next three months.
So the data collection started in September after school went back in session so that we could get good data counts for the passing through the traffic signals of the school buses.
So, just to clarify, when will we see the improved timing on Broad Street?
The improved timings will be implemented in February.
Can we ask other questions before we get to the map, or should we wait till the map?
Sure, I'll tell you, I think Vice Mayor Connolly's teed up for the next one, but you can ask her for that if you'd like.
My question is a request, actually, and that is, when these projects are done and are coming off of this chart, is there a way to memorialize that they have been done? Do we have an archive somewhere of a picture of this is the completed project, and here's the schedule so that we can see what we have done? Because I fear sometimes this stuff gets done and then it just disappears. And it would be great to be able to look back and say, these are the projects that were done in this timeframe, and here's the improvement, before and after photos.
Um, we certainly have maintained that internally, and we could look at a way of how to update these snapshots on the website. The story, uh, map that I'll show you, we're, we're keeping, uh, completed projects on there for one year after completion, and then we'll move them off. So there'll be a period of time that our community engagement tool will also message the completion, but we can look at how to fine-tune that besides an internal tracking.
Ms. Hardy?
Um, I had a similar request where I thought, um, I think it would be beneficial for us to show the trend over time of the number of projects we've got going on, because it seems like we have a lot, but maybe nice to be able to show a quarterly, how many we have active, how many are red, yellow, green, how many are completed, and be able to show over time? Because it seems like we've got a pretty full plate, and I think it'd be interesting for citizens to know where their tax dollars are going. Um, and then a couple specifics. Um, I saw the good news about all the grant, um, awards that we got, and I think I'm familiar with most of them, but it looks like we've got 5 million total for both Broad Street and Park Avenue improvements. Can we talk about what those, or, I guess, what projects are gonna use those funds for?
Mm-hmm. For Park Avenue, that is going from North Virginia to Washington, so it's picking up from the library down to the State Theater, and that, um, is in early design. Both of these are dealing, when it's multimodal, it's street, lane, marketing, spike, sidewalk, undergrounding, everything to implement the streetscape, um, standards that were just adopted either for Broad Street or Park Avenue in this case. And so, um, it's pretty comprehensive. We'll be looking at undergrounding, where do we need to widen the sidewalks? What can we do with our own city right away to do that? What might be future redevelopment, or, um, in front of our own property, what to do? Certainly could give you a lot more detail about that if needed. Both of those just have been awarded, so they're in early, uh, scoping, and we'll have a whole lot of community engagement and design input on both of those.
Got it. I just saw the Broad Street one was FY18, which I thought meant we'd have to use the money soon.
That's when the money has been awarded and we can start expending it, yep. So that one comes in, um, timing-wise before Park Avenue.
And then, given the recent discussions we've had about, um, the Annandale Crossing and the intersection with Gundry, is that gonna be added to this list? Do we think it's gonna be part of the bundle of the 636,000 for NTC, or where are we gonna take care of that request?
Um, we're currently looking at options for that now, whether it can, we're starting the development of the next CIP, so we're looking at grant applications, um, where NTC can do it for some of it, what can be part of the park, and then, once we get down to the main intersection, where we might need to get additional grant money and match. So we're looking at that whole thing from Gundry to Annandale, because part of Annandale and Maple ties into South Washington, but we don't have all of the funding sorted out. We know we have a chunk that can be NTC, some that might be the park piece, and what can we then design and need to complete? So we're still under development with some of the refinement of the recent inputs.
Okay. So between NTC and what we talked about with the streetscape improvements for Broad and Park, I know I personally would be interested in more, maybe work session time, focused on what those projects might look like, just given the focus of this council on walkability and streetscape. It seems like, before we get too far along, this group might want to have some input.
So, I can do that.
Thanks.
Uh, following up on the neighborhood traffic control is now an appropriate time to ask for a update on the manager's note to us earlier this week about the Northwest and Lincoln Avenue striping plan, which was implemented, and the, uh, temporary, or, you know, little islands that were put in.
That's right. Um, we, uh, have installed the islands and the, uh, the ped crossings, and I don't know whether the new signage was installed today or not, um, to help delineate those concrete or the, um, pedestrian refuges that have been installed. And in addition, uh, the, the line markings or the lane markings on the road were narrowed. Uh, it's a very wide street and encouraged speeding because it felt wide, and so we're trying to send a visual signal to narrow, narrower lane widths, um, and delineate, um, areas for parking, uh, so, so that's marked on the street. And, um, in so doing, uh, we have gotten comments about, uh, people who are concerned, if they don't have white paint delineating a parking area in front of their house, are they allowed to park there? And, uh, the answer to that is yes, um, and we are working with the contractors to, uh, get that marked, uh, um, so that that reality is reflected there. So we're, we're working with a couple of, uh, fixes on that. Uh, one of the ped crossings on Northwest Street also, uh, was not, uh, installed according to plan, and so we're making some adjusts, adjustments to that. Uh, but all in all, we have gotten a lot of positive comments about, uh, about these changes as well, and the goal always is to make it a more walkable street, um, and a safer street for all modes of traffic, uh, pedestrian, biking, and, and vehicles.
Okay, uh, unless there's anything else, why don't we move on to, I guess, is that the last part of your report?
Before we do that, could I, uh, demo the story map just a bit so the community and councils are aware of this tool?
Sure, maybe briefly.
Yep. So the link is in your memo. This is the first screenshot. On the left-hand side, you can, um, easily move through and do different instructions, but with all of them, you'll have a map of all of our projects for transportation facilities, and then we did a separate map for all of the traffic signals and work, because it's a whole lot more detailed, and it got, um, very busy, but it shows you a lot of good work happening. So going just back to the main one, and we could pick up, um, any of these dots for a project, and what you will see in the community can look at for a quick fix, what's the basic facts of the project, the price, the timeline, and the project manager. In all cases, if there's more information, it'll take you to the city's webpage, and then you will get the specific project and more details. So we work to, um, create a map that will show you current pro, all projects, and then you can also come down to recently completed projects as a follow-up to Ms. Connolly's question, and as we scroll down for those, my, uh, it's to my mouse, I'm much better with that. You can see bus shelters, and we're building in photos. Early on when we did the snapshot, there was a question about putting photos in, it was harder in that, you know, short page, so we've now done it here, and then you can see the bus shelters, and it's very exciting, I didn't highlight that, but all eight, eight are in, four more in order, we have three going to Independent Square and one at Kaiser shortly. So you'll can see recently completed projects, and then we move into, um, current projects. You can get an updated Roosevelt. If it's just in design, it hasn't started, we don't have a photo, we put the concept design so the community can have, uh, con, uh, context, and then we have contact information so folks can easily reach James Mack for any more information, if they haven't gone to the webpage, to see the actual project manager contact information, so.
Thank you very much, that's a great, uh, web...
Be welcome feedback once you all play with it, and we're creating a video that'll go on here with how to navigate the story map as well.
Great, that's, uh, looks like a wonderful resource, we appreciate that. Um, thank you so much for that in-depth report, it was quite useful. Uh, unless there's anything else, why don't we move on to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, do you want to call the first item? Or do you have anything else to say, Mr. Shields?
Uh, we were gonna provide an update on the City Hall project, but we do have an item later on in the agenda where we're talking about that, and so we'll, we'll hold that off until then, and we'll go right into the agenda now.
All right, let's call the first item then, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have, uh, TO 17-14, Ordinance Authorizing the Sale to Community Havens, Inc. of City-Owned Property at 366 North Washington Street, Miller House.
Thank you very much. Anyone coming on down?
Ms. Lewis and Mr. Ginsburg are coming forward. I will just note, um, at the outset, everyone was told that this was first on the agenda, and, and it's now 8:30, and so thank you for your patience and for all those who might be here for this item. Um, I'll let, uh, Ms. Lewis provide the staff report for this, but, uh, just by way of introduction, uh, the council referred this agreement and the potential sale of land to Community Havens, also known as Community Residences, for the, uh, construction of a group home for adults with intellectual disabilities, and now it's coming back to council for final consideration and action tonight. Ms. Lewis?
Yes. Good evening. Uh, as Wyatt said, and we also went through this at the, uh, last meeting in September, but, uh, just so you know, there is a deed that is being worked on, and the deed for the sale includes a restrictive covenant that limits the use of the land to uses under the comprehensive agreement, which is the next item, which the final comprehensive agreement is here. Um, and as Wyatt said, it's going to be for five adults with disabilities. Um, at the last meeting, council had asked for us to put this out for public comment, and we went to the planning commission, they have, we have attached, um, their resolution to approve, um, the comprehensive agreement and the sale, and they are in support. We also have, uh, information, and we have support from the Human Services Advisory Council and also from the Housing Commission. Um, so, we, um, I'm sorry, so, basically, as you know, we, the comprehensive agreement outlines the details of the sale, and so, we're ready to go. I think you have all of the information that you need. Uh, do you have any questions for us?
I don't know. Do we have any questions? While they're doing that, why don't we go ahead and open it up to the public while people are taking a look and see if they have any questions? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Any questions or comments or a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 17-14.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly on the second. Uh, before we move to a vote, is there any discussion or any questions? If not, why don't we go ahead and move to a vote? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Congratulations, that was readily pain-free, wasn't it? Uh, thank you all for coming out, and we appreciate your good work and look forward to, oh, there are two of them, is that what? All right, so why don't we go ahead and do the second motion then?
We, yeah, we have TR 17-35. It's a res, resolution to approve the comprehensive agreement between the City of Falls Church Community Residences, Inc., and Community Havens, Inc., property affiliate of Community Residences, to include the sale of city property and design, construction, and operation of residential group home located at 366 North Washington Street, Miller House.
All right, do we have a motion regarding that item?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt here 17-35.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. I'm gonna ask for public comment, even though I would doubt there is any, just as a formality. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Any comments or discussion?
I would just like to, if I might...
If you, you can.
Briefly thank you for your long work on this project, and, uh, I'm thrilled to be able to participate in this vote here tonight. It's something that's really good for the city and, uh, shows, um, our, uh, commitment to folks with, uh, all needs in our community. So thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Snyder, sounds like you have something to say as well.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to support this, um, effort. Uh, the city's contribution is really quite significant to this overall project, and I would, uh, just signal that, um, I would discourage, um, enthusiasm for additional city participation considering the extent to which we are, we have agreed to, um, participate in this project as reflected in the sale and comprehensive agreement.
And I would echo those comments, at least from my perspective as well. Um, any other, Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, also want to, uh, in particular, signal out to staff, um, and, uh, under the leadership of, uh, Wyatt Shields, our city manager, who worked diligently with, uh, Community Residences, um, to, uh, finalize the, um, the clawback provision that made it possible for this, uh, agreement to, um, move forward and, uh, to reach its conclusion. I, and I want to thank you, Ms. Lewis, for spending all this time massaging these documents and the process as well.
Thank you.
So thank you.
All right, unless there's any...
And also the...
Carol.
City Attorney, excuse me.
Thank you, Carol.
Anyone else who are there to mention this effort?
Arthur, thank you, Arthur.
All right, any other comments? If not, let's move to a vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Wasn't as painless as we thought originally, but anyway, uh, thank you very much for coming out and sticking around and for your good work.
With the ribbon cutting in 2019.
That's right, we're looking forward to it. Thank you so much. All right, let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk, keep us rolling.
Yes, this is a first reading for TO 17-15, Ordinance to Amend Ordinances 1970 and 1975 Regarding the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues Appropriating Funds for Fiscal Year 2018 for the General Fund and Capital Improvements Programs Funds.
All right, before we get to that, um, I think Vice Mayor Connolly has a disclosure, disclaimer she'd like to read, and I will probably follow her.
I have consulted with the city attorney, and although no declaration is strictly required, I want to make the following declaration before city council's consideration of proposed budget amendments in item 10B2 on tonight's agenda. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore am a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2018 budget. I can participate in this transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right, I have an eerily similar, um, disclosure to make. I have consulted with the city attorney, and although no declaration is strictly required, I want to make the following declaration before city council's consideration of proposed budget amendments in item 10B2. My wife is employed by the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2018 budget. However, I can participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. All right, unless anyone else has any disclosures, I want to move on to you, Ms. Bawa.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, and members of the, uh, council. Before you, uh, we have an ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance, uh, to amend the fiscal year 18 budget. We are requesting an increase of 1,187,257 dollars in general fund appropriation supported by, uh, grants and donations across...
grants and donations across various departments and programs. And we are requesting an appropriation of $872,048 in special transportation fund for capital improvement projects, primarily for West Broad Planning Opportunity Area Program and Bridges Program. This ordinance also requests $18,750 for stormwater facility as new grants, and also requests transfer between programs in special transportation and general government funds. Overall, there is no impact to the unassigned fund balance for general fund. And the second hearing, reading of this ordinance will be on November 13th, council agenda. With that, I conclude my report. If you have any specific questions.
All right. Do we have any specific questions or general questions or comments? Anyone have anything to say? Mr. Snyder?
I just have one quick suggestion to the city to be very extensive in your detour signage around the Van Buren Bridge project. That could rapidly become a bottleneck from almost any direction. So we need to really even go further out than we normally do for detour signs and to be very clear about what the options are to move safely around that particular project. It's, it's in a very sensitive area, so that's the request.
All right. Any other questions, comments? While people are thinking, I'm going to ask if there are any public comment. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Mr. Duncan, your furrow was, no, no comment? Okay.
I'm getting ready to make a motion so we can move.
All right. Let's do it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading TO 17-15 and schedule a public hearing in second reading on November 13th, 2017, authorize advertising the same according to law.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Oliver on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
We have TR-17-40, Resolution Endorsing the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2021 Grant Application for Bicycle and Pedestrian Sa- oh, no, I skipped one. I'm sorry. TR 17-43, Resolution to Endorse the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2021 Grant Application for a pedestrian crossing on Haycock Road.
All righty. Mr. Snyder, are you going to speak to this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's long been recognized that there are challenges for pedestrians and students to get across Haycock Road to get to school. And so we are requesting a resolution to endorse grant application to, in the future, put a facility, what's called a hawk signal, pedestrian crossing at this location. We think this will be an important addition as that area is, is redeveloped and improved. So we request your support for that resolution so that we can make that grant application. These funds will be coming to us in the future. There is on the second page of the, of the report, a picture of what this kind of thing can look like. These have been used at other locations. I think Wakefield High School is one of these. But the idea is to make a priority for pedestrians to get across that street, so.
Thank you very much. I think it's a great idea. We did discuss, I think, at a different time that this would not necessarily interfere with school planning. In other words, we're not going to put a hawk's crossing and signal in a place that may need to be moved with the potential redevelopment of the school because the funding will come now, but we'll have some time to plan and spend for it. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we, the location is on Haycock. It's not specific, but we know we'll need additional funds to help make this a safer crossing. So having this grant application will give us additional funds for that area that we otherwise would not have. And so I think it's a very timely request to get this grant application request in.
All right. Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Z, then Mr. Snyder, and then Ms. Oliver. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Will these have provisions for installation of cameras?
We'll have to look at the final design. I don't know whether it'd be cameras or not, but.
Right. I'm not asking that these be mounted now, but perhaps you could design that in just to the extent that that could be additional safety aspect that.
Certainly something we could look into. Again, we're hoping we'll get the award. So first we have to ask, and if we get the reward, we can look at the details of it.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Mr., we're going to defer. Ms. Oliver?
The City of Charlottesville has used a different kind of light on the pedestrian crossings where they're actually mounted in the street. Have we thought about that for this particular location?
Again, we're, in this location, we're looking first to see if we can request the money and then work on details. These hawk signals typically have something that spans the street, so it's visible to people in vehicles. So the final design of this would be determined and we would look into it in more detail if we get the money. But it's something that certainly could be looked at. At this point, we're requesting dollars to.
Just want to get the award, and once you get the award, we'll try to.
Exactly. It's a very wide street and it has a median in the center, so it's, it's a very challenging location. And so that's one of the ideas behind the, the drawing where it shows an overhead arm to help make sure all the people in all the lanes and cars recognize that there are people on foot trying to cross. So we certainly can look into all of the things mentioned, but first we've got to apply for it and hope we get it.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes, sir. Certainly support moving forward. My, my question is, is this different from a pedestrian-operated red light signal? And do drivers know what to do when they're approaching this? Are they supposed to stop? Yes, they are supposed to stop. So it's a red light. Do, do they really, because there's been a lot of confusion about bike paths and road intersections about what the driver's supposed to do. So does this have a red light and do drivers know when they see it they're supposed to stop? I think that'll be part of the design in terms of the signing and so forth. Again, the exact details of design will be yet to come. We'll certainly, if we're lucky enough to get the award, we'll look into those details. I think it's important to have signing, letting people know that such a signal is, is ahead of them so that they, and we'll need to put out, again, press releases and educate the public as to how to behave in these areas. And will we be working with VDOT on this? This is, I'm sure we'll have some working with them, but this is intended to be in the city so that we would have control over it. Also, there need to be improvements on either side of the road. Sidewalks on each side are inadequate, so that's another piece of this. You really land on very narrow pieces of concrete on both sides of Haycock Road. I think it's important we move forward. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Z has another question. Mr. Z?
I move to adopt TR 17-43.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we go to a vote, two things. One, I want to ask for public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. And my second comment I'll, I'll do after we do the vote. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Before you step down, Mr. Snyder, I just want to thank you for the great work you've done. I think you've really raised the bar here in the city on planning efforts, walkability, and just all the way around to really help us achieve a lot of the goals that council has articulated. So I want to extend my personal thanks, I think, for the great work you've done here.
Thank you. We've got some really good staff people who are actually doing all this good work, so thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have TR 17-40, Resolution Endorsing the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2021 Grant Application for Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Program Funding for Berman Park Greenway Enhancements.
All right. Welcome back, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're looking for the city to endorse our application for bicycle and pedestrian safety. This will be a 2021 grant application. And this is designed to help connect a very attractive and wonderful little park area, the Berman Park Greenway, which presently is not very well-connected. So if you, if you know where the pieces are, you have to go, you have to travel from across roads that are wider than they need to be with lots of no parking signs because you can't park in front of where these things are. So this is designed to provide connectivity. This concept has been identified in our future Parks for People Plan and is part of our efforts to connect the various green spaces and walkways within the city. There is a conceptual drawing on page two that shows where the enhanced crossings would be. We think this will help with traffic calming, with helping people understand where these parks are and how they connect to one another. And if you've been in other communities, you know that linear parks are very valued. Today, I was able to spend time with Jeff Sykes, who worked on, he's been working on this project, and we walked this entire area. It really has wonderful potential, but it clearly is lacking in the connectivity. So we think that this will enhance all the parks and, and bring more people to them and let people use them more readily. So we're looking forward to being able to compete for these funds and then deliver an attractive community-building type of project.
Right. And again, thank you for your efforts in trying to particularly get grant money so that this doesn't come out of the taxpayers' wallet. So, Ms. Oliver?
One comment and one question. The comment first is that, could we please take a look at the map in the online version of this? It's almost unreadable on the printout. So I'm hoping that the version online, you can actually read the map on page two. And then the second item I just wanted to ask about is the intersection of pedestrian and bicycle traffic in this corridor. Do, it's marked only as a pedestrian trail or are there bicycles in there?
This is, this is primarily a pedestrian trail. We do not have bicycles going through this particular area. It's a rather narrow trail within the park itself. It's not wide enough for both pedestrians and bicycles in this, as it presently exists.
And is it posted no bicycles?
I don't know that I've seen those signs, but as, I haven't seen people riding bikes through there. That certainly could be done. Again, the design of these connections will be an example of where you could post additional signing, if that's important.
I guess I would just say that if the funds are, become available for this project, that we carefully consider that intersection of pedestrian and bicycle traffic in this area. We have some parks where we have posted, and I just want to make sure that it's safe for anybody who's using it.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to call for public comment. Any member of the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter is, matters closed to the public. I want to turn it over to Mr. Z.
Thank you. Before I move this, I would like to say that I really appreciate the attention being paid to linear parks, something that a mature urban design landscape would, would have. And the fact that we're moving forward on doing these kinds of things is, is just really heartening and just shows that we are planning to live in the future. So with that, I move to adopt TR 17-40.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duncan on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Please call.
Just a quick question for both this one and the previous grants. When do we expect to find out if we get the money?
I, I'll have to, I don't know. I'll have to check into that, but hopefully soon. I don't know the answer to that.
All right. Madam Clerk?
We have TR 17-41, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Negotiate and Execute a Lease Agreement with North Washington LLC for 7,916 square feet of office space for municipal use for a 12-month period at a cost of $117,691.
All right. Ms. Mester?
Well, let me just provide a quick introduction. We would like to take the opportunity to provide the council with an update on the City Hall project. The thing to say about that is that we do plan to come back to the council in November for a deeper discussion on the City Hall project with the request ultimately for the council's approval of a construction, construction project. What this is, is a lease for the relocation of staff. And I'll just speak kind of briefly what the plan is as, as, as we've been working through all the different options. The intention is to have police operations move out of this building, and they would locate in trailers at the property yard. And the planning for that is well underway. Public Safety Dispatch would move to the fire station, which does serve as the city's continuity of operations plan. That's our backup dispatch operation location. Human Services would move to the gauge house. The Registrar of Voters and the EDO, they would move directly into the new space in April when, when Phase One is completed, so they would not be relocated offsite. And so this lease is for all the other offices that I've not named so far. So it includes planning, engineering, the Commission of Revenue, Treasurer, City Manager's Office, Finance, et cetera. And what we have worked through with Cindy's team, also with assistance of Jim Snyder's team, of just looking around the city, what are some of our best strategies for relocating staff? We looked at trailers on-site as an option. We looked at vacant office space across the city. And what we believe is the best value for the taxpayer and the best way to maintain continuity of services and provide a good public interaction for people who need building permits or to pay their taxes or conduct other city business would be to relocate at 400 North Washington Street. The, the budget for this is just over $117,000, and that would come out of the, that's part of the construction or the overall project plan for the City Hall project. We always envisioned that we would need relocation, and that was factored into the budget. So there's not a new appropriation requested. What's requested is authorization for the lease. A couple of things that we have not yet finalized is where we'll conduct council meetings during construction. We're working through different options on that, either at the community center, at school board offices, or potential other locations. And that's true for all of our other board and commission meetings as well. But the action requested tonight is for, for the council's consideration of, of a lease agreement where most of our city offices and city, city business counters would be moved to 400 North Washington Street. And so the basic terms for that lease is it is a one-year lease term that would start on January 1st. The rate is $17 a foot. We would have one month rent waived, so we'll be paying for 11 months and receive a year's access to the space. There are also certain pieces of the space that we will not pay for until later in the, in the year as it becomes available, and that actually works pretty well with our phasing. In terms of timing, this is coming to the council now for, for two principal reasons. One is with, with the council's blessing of this lease, and then we can begin the planning in earnest for how we'll move what IT, networking and other infrastructure we need to do in earnest for how we'll move what IT, networking, and other infrastructure we need to do to have that, a functional space for us when we do begin to move offices there. And then, two, the landlord would like some certainty. He either needs to lease this space up if we're not committed to it, and so, we asked for as much time as we could to make that decision, but for those two reasons, that's why this is coming to the council tonight, as opposed to later with the larger decision on the construction contract. That's an overview of the lease, and Cindy, are there any points that I left out that you would want to mention, and then we can answer any questions?
Not for the lease, but I would like to put it into context for an update on the overall City Hall project, which is a memo earlier in your packet under the city manager's report. Mr. Shields has commented to the phasing of the project, so I want to talk about that in the overall schedule. We are at a point where the site plan has been approved by the Planning Commission on September 5th. The VZA approved all required variances and parking waivers on September 14th. Just this past Friday, the final plans were submitted into Development Services for the permit review. That information is also concurrently being reviewed by HIT and their subcontractors for pricing the project. Earlier, our costs went to subs with the general plans. Now, they actually have the very physical plans, how many linear feet of this, and wall coverings and carpet and so forth, plumbing. So, they're quoting that out. The last Thursday and today, we actually had all the subcontractors on-site walking the building physically with the plans. Every sub will have multiple quotes so that we can negotiate the best price. That guaranteed maximum price would be the contract award that comes back to council early in December. The construction kickoff would be in December, so we're running concurrently the pricing and the permits review. The plan for phasing would be, Phase One is the center part of the project, which is where we are now, in chambers, and then the new parking structure for all the security features and the new chamber space, and that also takes out dogwood and office space down below. So, any of the staff that are physically in the center core would be moving in December to gage house, property yard, thus the police officers on the street because their cars are moving there, and they need to be near their cars for response times. West Wing, which would be behind where council is sitting, which is Development Services and Public Works and HR, would move to the offsite lease space in February, and then following in April, the rest of the east wing, and that allows us to time all the infrastructure and the phasing and the new HVAC systems that the contractor needs to do. So, the timing of the offsite lease space, as Mr. Shields indicated, is necessary so we're ready on February 1, which seems a very far way off, but it actually is not when we're trying to figure out desks, where everybody fits, know where they're going to be, so we can do all the computer drops, so computers, munis, and all are seamless when we move them over on a weekend, so staff and services are up and running the following Monday. I think that's a real highlight of where we are. I do have the renderings with me of council house questions. I have included in your packet the big sheet that you saw in June, when we did a briefing for council, and then also in September, on the 18th, we were before council again with Studio 27, that kind of walkthrough. This big sheet shows the difference between the 2014 plan, 2016, and our current design. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions and have a dialogue with council.
Thank you very much. Before we move to questions or comments, I want to open it up to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have, Mr. Z has a question or a comment? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I can see a time in the near future when most of the city business is going to be done by Google Hangout, but I do actually have a question, which is, there's an expression in project management that says 90% of the project gets done in 90% of the time, and the remaining 10% take up the other 90% of the time. So, what happens if we get to the end of December of 2018, and we're not done yet with regard to this lease?
With regard to 400 North Washington, that property does have a long-term plan to redevelop, and Mr. Wheeler has indicated if we have a month or two shift, and we can give them enough notice, he would work with us to extend the lease.
I would like to see perhaps a more fleshed-out contingency plan.
Yeah, I follow your thinking, so we will follow up on that.
Thank you very much.
What you can do along those lines is just put an option in the lease, like a tenant option, so that you don't have to go ask for it a year from now. Just say, "I have a 12-month lease. Tenant has an option for a three-month renewal," or whatever it is. Whatever term you want to do is an optional renewal period. Put it in your lease right now.
Okay, other questions? Mr. Duncan?
Where's the farmer's market going?
The farmer's market is staying put, the way we have the construction design and the construction fencing. We can reopen it back up on Saturday, so they'll still be in the front of City Hall, down the side, and where they go on the side, except for a couple of times when we're doing sidewalk work in front or side, where they might have to go more to the street or the sidewalk. The core of them will be 100% in place, as normal.
Okay.
And if I could, with the lease question, that was a really good one. I did forget to mention that the city attorney has been working with me and Mr. Wheeler on the lease terms, and we have reached concurrence on the legal terms.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly?
And what about parking at 400 North Washington? That's not a very big parking lot. Will people still be parking here and walking, or?
Per the lease, we have 20 spots there, and we are envisioning those are predominantly going to be available for the public, so we're looking to talk to Christ Churchman and/or Columbia Baptist Church for staff parking and city vehicles, a partnership there. Christ Crossman would be ideal because it's literally across Columbia.
Mr. Snyder?
So, let me go back to the current design here for a minute, and I certainly have never taken any action to delay dealing with safety issues, but I want to go back to this design for a minute. So, when the proposal was to glass in the dead area between the two wings here, that didn't necessitate redoing the city council chambers, did it?
No, at that point, we were bumping out front.
Right, so you were creating the corridor out front, and instead, now, the plan we've got is a complete destruction, if you will, and replacement in the placement of the corridor, basically where we're sitting right now. Is that right? I have to say, I'm not a fan of this design. I have never been, I am not now, but I'm conflicted because I don't want to hold up the safety issues. I think they need to be addressed, and there are other service issues as well. I just want to state that for the record. I thought there were other plans that were better, but again, the safety issues are first and foremost in my mind. Thank you.
So, I would like to echo somewhat similar views. I do still have lingering concerns about the garage and the need for the garage. And Mr. Shields, I think you indicated, it's your earlier remarks, that we would still be able to have that discussion. Tonight's vote does not preclude having further input on the design of this project.
The, we, let's continue the dialogue. The changes to the plans, though, because as we mentioned earlier, HIT is out there getting bids on the plans as they are right now, and so, there are consequences to it. But we could talk in a little bit more detail as to what those consequences are and how we would handle any changes directed by council at this phase.
Yes, that is true. The site plan's approved with this design, and we have taken in the security, and I believe the change to the front actually works better because we have a direct line to elevators and stairs, so it's easier for citizens and construction in the back. So, the site plan's been approved, and the permit's been filed, and we're getting prices. So, changes will take some redevelopment and some costs, but we haven't locked down the final thing because council has not awarded the contract.
All right, is there anything else?
To clarify, it looks like the GMP is going to be in mid-November, and that's when we're going to, early December is when council's approving the final contract. That would be kind of the point of no return? So, if we had concerns about the design or wanted to rework anything, that would be the deadline?
Correct, but if council wishes to do redesign, I would respectfully request that sooner than later, because when we have a GMP in front of you, we will have negotiated it based on this design. So, it would be a month, five weeks of unproductive time for your staff and potential contractor.
Mr. Duncan?
I'm just, it's in the make a motion.
Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt TR-17-41.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
We have TR-17-42, resolution to endorse the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority fiscal year 2019 grant application for transportation alternatives program funds for dual walking and biking trails along the Washington and Old Dominion Park and Trail, WNOD.
Mr. Snyder?
I'm this mayor, and this is a request to endorse the Nova Parks.
I think they want you to hit the microphone, Jim.
I apologize, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a request to endorse the Nova Parks grant application to develop dual walking and biking trails along the WNOD Dominion Park and Trail system. We're fortunate to be a place where this is going to be piloted, if you will. There are some drawings on the third page that show examples of how this might be done, and I think it's a good example of how the city, working with Nova Parks, has been able to develop with them a master plan for the portion of the park here in the city, and then moving forward with an advance to provide a safer, better method of getting through the parks. Again, this is a request to endorse their application for the transportation alternative program funds.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions? I know we were not able to go to the presentation because we were having our own walking tour, but is there any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I did watch it, although it was, I don't know if it was my computer or this sound, but it was very hard to hear, so I looked at all these pictures, and I just want to make sure, if we're looking at the picture on page three of three here, the city's adopted master plan is being incorporated into this plan. So, our plan for crossings that we've approved already is being incorporated into this request.
Yes, yes, that's correct. It's a really good approach of collaboration between us and the Nova Parks group.
Mr. Snyder, did you have a question or comment?
No, I don't, just a proposed action.
Okay, does anyone else have? Mr. Z might have a question first.
Oh, I actually have a comment, less of a question. I really think that this dual trail establishes an important linear park in our city. The, I assume that the earlier comments with regard to landscaping and native development is that you're still striving toward a wildlife habitat certified that would be continuous along a trail, and especially to highlight the importance that we do our part for the Monarch Butterfly flyways. You can make a note of that, that'd be really great. And to echo one of your staff members' comments, that it's important that when this trail intersects with traffic, that people understand that they're driving through a park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify, Mr. Snyder, the, as was discussed earlier, the design for this, has this been finalized or semi-finalized based on our conference of plan or our park plan, or is this something that'll be essentially open for design after the grants approved or received?
It's pretty well designed conceptually, so it matches what we've been talking about and approving as part of the WNOD master plan, the city's greenest street, and so, I think the planning work that was done and working with Nova Parks is why we have such a good design. It hasn't been engineered yet, but the conceptual plans here are what we're going forward with.
This involves pretty heavy landscaping, does it not, like trees and the like?
Well, there will be landscaping. I think one of the main things is trying to throttle down these streets that go through the park so that you have safe crossings for bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists understand that they are going through a park, and it's not a park going through the street.
I seem to recall that when we heard this maybe a year or two ago, the idea of possibly having it sort of tree-lined, you know, like in terms of the periphery of the right-of-way, having possibly a tree-lined area. Was there any, where's that at?
There are, there's a lot of design work that shows up in the WNOD master plan for that area that council adopted, so there are graphics that aren't included in this, but yes, some of them feature creating tree lines with appropriate heights, depending on where they are relative to the overhead wires. So, yes, there was an effort in that plan, and that would be part of this, to enhance the landscape and help better define the park with better landscaping, so you have a better idea of where the extent of the park is. Those drawings are in the, in our adopted master plan.
Yeah, I'd certainly encourage you to do more of that. I walk the trail almost every day with my kids to school, and there, it's really overgrown on both sides in a lot of places, and I would say it's a mess, but it just does not look like a park, and I think the idea of creating kind of a feel and look of an actual park would be quite beneficial.
We'd be happy to highlight some of those, but that, we agree with that, and that was one of, in part of the study that was done, it was pretty apparent that there is room for improvement and using landscape to help define the edges of the park that really have just kind of been overtaken by invasive species is a very important part of this.
All right.
It's a 100-foot-wide park.
I know, it does, it certainly don't look like. It looks like about 20 feet.
It's not just a trail, it's a park with a trail, so.
Yeah, I think taking advantage of those edges, because right now, it's just overgrown with brambles and thorns and the likes, anyway. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So, if Nova Parks gets this grant for the dual trails, does it include the other components of the WNOD plan that we talked about? So, I remember we had things in there for lighting, plazas, the crossings we already talked about, the landscaping.
We have additional dollars that have been funded to do some of those crossings and plazas, so this is, I think, combining resources to complete the park within the city by adding the dual trails that will complement the other, the other dollars that will help do those crossings and.
Yeah, we'll cross our fingers that we get the money. So, I think dual trails will be a big change, but I think generally will be pretty well-received, but lighting and I think the plazas idea probably would like more community discussion on kind of the design and actual implementation of those.
Yeah, they have to be, of course, it's on their property, and so, we've been, the conceptual plans have been drawn, and one of the reasons they've held off on those is when to make sure that they will fit within where the dual trails end up being located. So, that's been one of the reasons, those have been waiting for the dual trail locations. But they're modest improvements to existing stopping points on the trail, but upgrading them so that they're more attractive and useful.
Again, I would compliment you and staff with trying to find creative ways to get funding for these important priorities without necessarily coming out of taxpayers' dollar for each one of these projects. This is great to get some things done. It's great to plan, but it's a lot better to see it done.
I couldn't agree more. I'm excited to see it actually built, so.
All right, Mr. Z?
Move to adopt TR-17-42.
We have a second, we have Mr. Snyder on the second. I want to open it up to public comment first. Any member of the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed, and Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and call the vote, please?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and so, let's move on. It looks like we're now in the latter portion of our agenda. We do have a closed session afterwards, so people should remember that. Mr. Shields, is there anything to say about the campus planning endeavor?
No, there are no updates for tonight.
Okay, Ms. Vice Mayor Connolly, and then Mr. Snyder.
On the school's website, fccps.org/campusproject, there is a very detailed timeline of the campus project that you can direct people to if they're asking questions about it, starting in 1948 with the First Bond Referendum, going all the way up until last month. It details all of the work that council and school board have done in the last four years, eight years, 12 years, all the way back to the First Bond Referendum, so that will be very useful to people.
All right, thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, could you clarify this point, and it did come up in the public session of the last Economic Development Working Group connected with the campus planning, that the timeline calls for not issuing the construction bonds before there is a development agreement. Is that right?
That is correct. So, in the Alvarez and Marcel roadmap, and what we've described at public hearings on this, that the intent is to have a signed agreement with the developer before we issue the construction bonds for the school.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to business not on the agenda. Are there any standing regional committee or council liaison reports?
Your standing economic development committee, which has been striving to meet, has moved its meeting from when it was to Friday, November 3, at 9:15 a.m. Madam Clerk, follow the Economic Working Group meeting that morning in a location that you will tell us and post, and of the many significant issues we'll be discussing, tops on the agenda will be the festive lighting plan. the festive lighting plans for our fair city, which the clerk and others are working hard on. So just to give a heads-up, an event I believe will be planned for some point later in November to kick off whatever it is we're doing this year in the way of festive lighting.
Yes.
We are working to confirm that date as to when those lights will be up, but we'll have more to report on this. But we do anticipate that the lighting program that will have the ability to change colors of the lights, that will be--
Shiny.
Something that will lend a lot of attractiveness and it'll be a good draw to the commercial district. That's the goal.
I'm just, I'm just not sure it's going to go all the way up to lazy mics, though, so it may not meet the Hardy test, but still.
That is correct. The focus is in the first two blocks of--
At least it'll meet the Tarter test of changing colors. Okay, thank you, I'm just bringing that up because we don't meet again here until November 13, I think, so that will be fairly close to whenever that event will be. Thank you.
All right, other, Ms. Oliver?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the Budget and Finance Committee meets this Friday at 8 o'clock.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
And the Government Operations Committee meets tomorrow at 2 p.m. in Ms. Hughes's office.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
I had a request before we get into the crazy part of the end of the year. I wanted to make sure that we had on our radars our annual day of service, if we can target that again for Martin Luther King in January and start planning maybe a citywide service project and a proclamation if we need to do that again. That would be great.
Good idea. Thank you for organizing last year's event. It was quite good. All right, is there anything else? The Economic Working Group is meeting this Friday, is it not, Mr. Shields?
No. The next meeting of the Economic Working Group is November 3.
Okay, for the school?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. All right, anything else anyone wants to say? If not, there are no minutes to be approved tonight. So unless there's anything else, why don't we move on to our closed session? And I have a motion for that. If I could find a pen. Does anyone have a pen I could borrow? All right, upon a motion made by council member--
Connolly.
Connolly, seconded by council member--
Hardy.
All right, let's go with Hardy. And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711.3 for discussion of acquisition of real property for a public purpose, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711.8 for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring such advice by such council, in particular advice on possible matters for the legislative package. Councilwoman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Snyder?
Yes.
Councilwoman Z?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, so it is now 9:24, and where did you propose a way to meet, Mr. Shields? All right, let's do it. Does anyone want to take a couple-minute break before we go into closed session? What's that? All right, we are back. Upon a motion made by council member-- Duncan? Seconded by council member--
Oliver.
And passed by vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilwoman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter? Time is 10:01. Certification upon a motion made by council member--
Z.
And seconded by council member--
Duncan.
And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were, was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting in the city council. Councilwoman Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you want to talk about tonight?
Mayor, move to adjourn.
All right, sounds like a plan. A second, and all in favor?